President Pro Tem Brown, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Thank you so much. This evening, council is pleased and appreciative to have Pastor Brian Williams, Senior Pastor at Hope City, to lead us in prayer.
Greetings, everyone. Thank you for the invitation to come and pray with you guys tonight. So let's go forward. Father, we thank you for the city of Columbus, God, and these elected leaders who you have allowed to guide our city forward. We pray that tonight in this meeting, that your wisdom, your truth, and the heart that you have for these people will be clearly on display, and decisions can be made that bring our city to a more equitable and just place. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please, people, sing your prayers. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President.
Thank you, madam clerk. This week's communications received by the city's clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications we ran to the record? Thank you, madam clerk. So as I have with every meeting recently, I'd like to take a moment to provide information on COVID deaths in our city. As of today, June 29th, there have been 351 deaths in Columbus due to COVID-19. An important marker is that's 111 more deaths, 111 more deaths of our neighbors who passed away because of this disease since our last meeting just two weeks ago on June 15th. I want to encourage everyone to get tested, and to do that, you can call 614-645-1519. I'm going to ask our health commissioner to give us any update that she may be able to provide right now dealing with COVID-19. Health Commissioner?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Council President Harden. I'm happy to join you this evening. You are correct. We continue to see members of our community lose their life due to this virus that we are still learning so much about. Over the last five days, we've seen a significant increase in the number of cases that have been presented to my staff here at Columbus Public Health. This is not due to increased testing. I know that we have increased the testing in our community, and we're very grateful for all of those who have stepped up and made that opportunity available for our community members. But what we are measuring, and if you follow the governor, he talks about the positivity rate. So what we are measuring is the positivity rate. We know at one point in our, in the pandemic, pretty much in the height of the pandemic, our positivity rate was at 50%. That means 50% of those who were tested were positive. But at that time, we were really limiting who we would test. We were only testing those who were very sick and likely those who needed hospitalization. In the past few weeks, we've expanded that testing to test those who are asymptomatic. And statistics tell us you want a positivity rate of 10% or less. That really tells you that you're doing a good job of testing if you're under 10%. We've been hovering around 7% to 8%, sometimes as high as 9% for the last three to four weeks. So our testing is helping us, but our positivity rate is not changing. But for the last four days, we've seen a significant increase in the number of cases. To be specific with you, I can tell you what those numbers look like. On Thursday, we had 138 cases reported to us. On Friday, we had 177 cases, Saturday, 153, and Sunday, 140. Today, Monday, we had 92, but Mondays are usually a low reporting number because there's not a lot of testing being done on the weekends. I anticipate when we look at our numbers tomorrow, they're going to bounce back up over 100. This is not the time for any of our residents to let their guard down. Even though we have started to responsibly open up Ohio, there are still things that we all need to do to protect ourselves, our neighbors, and our loved ones. And those steps are very simple. Stay home if you're sick. When you're out in public, wear a mask. When you can, practice six feet of spacing between you and someone who's not in your household, and wash your hands. Those are the tools we have right now at our disposal to help us combat this virus. We have no vaccine, and we have no medical treatment to treat this virus, to cure this virus. But we do have those four simple steps that we can all practice every single day. So again, those are stay home if you're sick, wear a mask when out in public, practice safe spacing when you're not around your family, your household members, and wash your hands. We are continuing to monitor this situation, working with our hospitals, looking at our hospital capacity. Myself, the Board of Health, and the mayor are committed to make sure that we don't find ourselves in a situation like the Houston's, like the Florida's, like the Texas', and even like parts of California. So stay tuned for what we'll see in terms of cases over the next few days and in terms of what different interventions we think that we can do for our community to help all of us stay healthy and safe. Thank you, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Are there any questions from my colleagues of the Health Commissioner? Thank you so much, Commissioner. Please pass along our sincere appreciation for all your, the folks who are on the front line, keeping us safe.
Will do. Thanks.
I'd also like to take a moment to restate what council will be working on over the next month and what our long-term efforts will look like around safety. In the next month, we will put forward a short-term legislative package around demilitarization, around no-knock raids, around hate group affiliation, and independent investigations. We will have hearings, and we will vote. This short-term package is made up of critical elements that I believe we can get done immediately in addition to important work the mayor is doing to implement the Community Safety Advisory Commission's recommendations and the Matrix Report. I'm sure President Pro Tem will shout out her hearing, but we have a hearing tomorrow at 4:00 PM that we encourage folks to participate in on demilitarization. I know that Councilmember Favours' team is looking at a hearing in the coming weeks that I hope she'll let folks know about shortly. We'll also be scheduling hearings regarding no-knock and quick-knock raids, as well as independent investigations. In addition to these long-term, to the long-term recommendations from the Safety Advisor Commission, council is also looking to solidify the agreement with the Bureau of Criminal Investigations regarding lethal use of force cases. And we expect to advance that legislation, which will act as a stopgap until we can implement the longer-term reform that meets the standard of the Safety Advisor Commission. We're working to complete all of this in the next 30 days. After that, after that, we will start work leading up to our November, leading up to November, which is when the mayor presents his proposed budget to council. We'll be conducting an extensive community engagement effort to reimagine what safety means to all of us. That community engagement will be a chance for folks to imagine a different kind of public safety, and I know this council is committed to that. With that, I will move on to resolutions, and I will first go to President Pro Tem.
Thank you, Council President. I don't have any resolutions, but I did want to announce or acknowledge and remind people that tomorrow, June 30th, at 4:00 PM, I will be holding a Finance Committee hearing virtually to cover changes to the city's purchasing code affecting the Division of Police's ability to obtain and utilize certain equipment. The presence of officers should never look and feel to residents as if we are at war. Very important for us to engage in a dialogue that includes the police, includes questions and comments from council members, and includes perspectives from our residents. In addition to hearing from the Division, we really do need broad engagement by residents to understand and help us sort through these important issues. Please contact my office to receive instructions on attending or participating in the hearing if you have not seen the advisories that have been sent previously. The hearing is streamed on Facebook. We also have a number for you to call in if you'd like to listen. And the individual in my office who's taking written testimony is James Carmine, and his email address is JWcarmine@columbus.gov. Thanks so much. That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Mitch Brown?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Dorans?
Thank you, Council President Harden. Also wanted to encourage folks to attend the hearing tomorrow. Looking forward to participating myself. But I also wanted to announce that the Public Utilities Committee will be hosting a joint public hearing with the Environmental Committee chaired by Councilmember Remy on the topic of utility aggregation. That'll be next Tuesday, July 7th, virtually at 5:00 PM. Residents from Trey Bell LLC and other organizations will attend to discuss the city's efforts to provide competitive retail energy supply costs for Columbus citizens and support renewable energy development, especially local renewable energy here in Columbus to advance Columbus's sustainable economy, ensure that the supplier provides quality, reliable service, and provides first-rate customer service. This hearing will be available livestream on CTV and broadcast on Spectrum, Channel 1024, WOW Channel 3, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. This video will also be posted in the City of Columbus YouTube channel following the event. You can see my Facebook page and communications from the council for more details, how folks participate, and we're certainly looking forward to a robust citizen engagement on that issue. So thanks, and that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Favre?
Thank you, Council President Harden. No resolutions tonight, but did want to ask residents to save the date. The Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee will be hosting a hearing to review hate group affiliation background check legislation on Monday, July 13th, at 5:00 PM. That's all.
Thank you, Madam, or Councilmember? Councilmember Remy?
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I have nothing else to say.
Thank you, Councilmember, and Councilmember Tyson.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any comments by our elected officials? I see we're joined by our auditor, City Attorney's Office, City Treasurer's Office?
What is Brian?
At this time, I would request the following ordinance to be removed from the Consent Action portion of the agenda, and I'm asking for 1326-2020 to be removed from the consent agenda. Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of items destined in disconsent? Seeing none, maybe I have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk?
No, moved.
Second. Thank you, councilmembers. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Well, the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading.
Finance Committee ordinance 1376-2020, Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance 1317-2020, Public Utilities Committee Resolution 88X-2020, ordinances 1266, 1299, 1332, 1335, 1343, 1344, 1357, 1365, 1367, 1377, 1428, 1463-2020, Technology Committee ordinance 1360-2020, Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance 1151-2020, Economic Development Committee ordinance is 1363, 1364, 1431, 1449, 1457, 1485, 1486, 1494, and 1496-2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We don't have any speakers on the first reading. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action, where the clerk now read those ordinance numbers into the record.
Finance Committee ordinance is 1267, 1271, 1353, 1356, 1368, 1378, 1379, 1383, 1393, 1397, 1402, 1424, 1461, 1474, and 1563-2020. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 1263, 1264, 1318, and 1330-2020. Education Committee ordinance 1425-2020. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 1341, 1346, 1400-2020. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 961, 1235, 1243, 1255, 1274, 1325, 1362, and 1430-2020. Technology Committee ordinance is 1248, 1358, 1359, 1361, 1366, and 1385-2020. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 556, 1055, 1240, 1242, 1311, 1312, 1323, 1340, 1382, 1384, 1407, and 1466-2020. Housing Committee ordinance is 1389, 1401, 1408, 1416, 1417, 1418, 1479, 1480-2020. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee ordinance is 1003 and 1297-2020. Economic Development Committee ordinance is 1337, 1338-2020. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 1203, 1322, and 1336-2020. Small and Minority Business Committee Resolution 100X, 101X, 102X, 103X, and 104X-2020. We also have appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0063 and A0064-2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have several speakers. We have several speakers on a couple of our ordinances on the consent portion. Just to go over speaking, we allow three, four speakers, and three speakers who are for legislation and three speakers against for each piece of legislation. If a speaker is not here, we will go down the list. And so we will try, and I will read the names of all the speakers that we have that are not able to speak. So the first speaker to speak for ordinance 1353 is Sarah Weaver, and she's via WebEx. So Weaver, let me know when you are with us. It's Sarah Weaver.
We do not have a Sarah Weaver.
All right, we will go down the list. Paige Swineheart Cord is joining us via WebEx. Is Paige with us?
I got her. Where's your phone?
I do not have a Paige.
Our next speaker on ordinance 1353 is Nora Baldoff. Is Nora with us?
No.
The next speaker on ordinance 1353 is Haley Kujawa. Is Haley with us?
Hi. Oh.
Welcome, Haley. Did I hear you?
Emily is muted.
Yeah, no, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Thanks so much.
All right, I'm just going to tell you have three minutes to speak, and if you would just give your name and your, if you're representing an organization, then you're good to go.
Okay. So hi, my name's Haley Kujawa. I'm a graduate student at Ohio State. I'm not representing any organization. I'm just a citizen of Columbus. And I urge the city council to vote for ordinance 1353, which would put a freeze on police hiring. So the reason I support this is because an overwhelming percentage of the Columbus city budget, so 37%, goes to the police. These city funds could be used much more strategically elsewhere to invest in safer communities like education and public health. I do not in any way, as a community member, support an increase in the police personnel. And I actually ask that we can begin defunding the police in the long term. Over the past weekend, on Saturday, June 27th, I watched somewhere between 15 to 25 police come to tow a car. You can imagine how big of a waste of money that is, having that many police personnel readily available to do a simple task. I say no more police should be added to the city. Again, I ask the city council to vote for ordinance 1353 and put a freeze on the police personnel hiring. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley. And I'm going to have either the chair of this committee or the director of Finance speak to what this ordinance is after we go through the folks that we have.
Okay.
So thank you. So are there any questions for Haley or comments? Seeing none, thank you so much, Haley, for your participation this evening.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
The next speaker that we have via WebEx is Vanessa Remmers. Is Vanessa with us this evening?
No.
Thank you. And the last person speaking for the ordinance 1353 is in person, and that's Andrew Lynn. Sure. Is it unmuted? All right, Andrew, welcome to council. Would you state your name and if you represent the organization, and you have three minutes? I think you're still muted, so.
He's all set. He's okay. Go ahead and speak, please.
Is it good?
Yes.
I think we're good now.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Andrew. I'm a member of Columbus Socialist Alternative. And over the past few days and weeks, you know, we've seen the Columbus police unleash a shameful display of violence against protesters who are fighting for justice. President Harden, I know you and yourself experienced some of that. And I personally have witnessed Columbus police pepper spraying protesters, including women and minors directly in the face at point-blank range. I saw one officer come up behind a protester and rip their mask off unprovoked, and wooden and rubber bullets have been fired at people, which of course risks permanent injury or even death. At the same time, you know, the police have done nothing to prosecute people who have driven into the crowds of protesters, like people who have taken their cars and accelerated into crowds of protesters. Nor has our city or state government done anything to bring justice to the officers who are responsible for killing Julius Tate, Tyree King, or Henry Green. And in fact, shamefully, Masonic Sanders, the partner of Julius Tate, was convicted for the death of Julius Tate, even though it was a CPD officer that murdered him. So ordinance 1353 puts a freeze on the personnel, as far as I understand, puts a freeze on how many personnel are in the police force. And given the violence that CPD has used on our communities, I think it's clear that, you know, we should not be expanding the police force. But I also want to say that simply freezing the amount of personnel is not enough and that we need a full investigation of every single officer in CPD and a purge of every single officer who has a history of sexism, racism, or violence. We also need a community control of our police and not just, you know, not just a powerless civilian review board, but something that is actually democratically elected with real teeth in the hiring and firing process, as well as the budget review and power to support. Just really quickly, I also stand 1346. At a time when millions of people around the world and the country, oh, yes. Okay. Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, I support ordinance 1353, but again, believe that it needs to go further. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. The following speakers are speaking against ordinance 1353 via WebEx. We have Todd Slaughter. Do we have a Todd Slaughter with us?
No, sir.
Do we have a Judith Murphy Smiths?
No.
All right. Thank you. Director Lombardi, would you speak to what 1353, that ordinance is, please?
Sure. Thank you. I think everybody can hear me. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you, President Harden, President Pro Tem Brown, and other members of council. The mayor submitted a budget in November with a certain amount of authorized strength. That budget was amended by city council in February, which added some positions to various agencies. This ordinance simply ensures that those positions that were amended as part of that amendment by council are in line with the budget going forward and really hit the offices of Recreation and Parks, the Department of Finance, and Diversity and Inclusion. So this is just to make sure that the authorized strength in those departments are mirrored correctly in the budget as amended. Take any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, Director. So I just want to be clear for those folks who interpreted that piece of legislation as, that it is not part of council's reform package, conversations that we will have over the next month for sure, but was more run-of-the-mill to do with other departments. But we appreciate the feedback and the engagement on ordinance 1353. On this list, we also have speakers for 1326, but that has been moved to the Safety Committee. So I'm going to go to the speakers that are speaking against ordinance 1346. And I'm going to start with Caitlin Armstrong. Do we have a Caitlin Armstrong with us?
We did, sir. Looks like she's no longer listed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a Jamie Abbott who should be joining us via WebEx, speaking against 1346?
Do not have Jamie Abbott.
Thank you. Do we have Angela Davis, speaking against 1346 via WebEx?
No, sir.
Do we have Haley Smith, speaking against ordinance 1346 via WebEx?
Do not have a Haley Smith.
Do we have Anisa Awad, speaking against ordinance 1346 via WebEx? Is that Anisa?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can. Welcome to council. Just wanted to give you just the intro that if you would state your name and any organization that you may represent, and that you have three minutes to speak, welcome to council.
Thank you, Council President. My name is Anisa Awad, and I'm here representing People's Budget Columbus. And I will make this very brief because I already sent you my testimony, and I really didn't think I was going to be able to speak. But of course, I am very opposed to ordinance 1346 for the request of opening up $225,000 for the militarization and uniforming of new police officers for July 2020. I don't really understand how we can speak about the reimagination of public safety while we continue to fund the uniforms and quote-unquote accessories of brand-new recruits that potentially could be thrown into the streets with nonviolent protesters such as myself in such a time of conversation about, you know, general police brutality and reimagining public safety. So, I just really want us to understand that even if we are having, you know, it's our belief that we have to be giving these officers uniform because that's the status quo. I want us to understand that we can't reimagine public safety, we can't reimagine what the city of Columbus looks like, we can't reimagine what our communities look like when we stick to the status quo. And that's in direct alignment with uniforming and accessorizing police officers that have been seen time and time again to assault nonviolent protesters, to be apparently throwing civilians in the back of unmarked vans, and to be following very prominent organizers home at night, including myself. So, I again am vehemently opposed to ordinance 1346. And I want all council members to know that it's a very loud and clear message what is being displayed here in a vote for this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anisa. And we have one speaker, Andrew Lynn is... I apologize. Do any council members have any questions for Anisa?
I do, Council President Harden.
Councilmember Faber.
Thank you, Ms. Anisa, for your comments this evening and your time. So, my question would be, what would be a possible solution in this scenario if the city of Columbus has invested in a recruit of officers who will be graduating very soon? What would be your recommendation for outfitting those officers?
Thank you, Councilmember Faber. It's a very legitimate question. And I think that I'm not here to speak for the citizens of Columbus, but I am for even for People's Budget Columbus. And I speak as an individual citizen when I say that I know that we all understand that these are very unprecedented times and that we can go into July putting a pause on what has been normal and has been the regular, you know, administrative duties of uniforming officers. Maybe we give them some extra time for training, maybe we have them take classes or work with professors that would be willing to talk to them about restorative justice and other issues in relation. I think that, you know, this is another thing that we can be talking about. And of course, I'm not here to make like very definitive recommendations, but I do think that opening it to the public will garner very insightful and very creative responses to that question. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember, thank you, Anisa. Are there any questions or comments for our speaker? Thank you so much for your comments. Look forward to your participation tomorrow at the public hearing. We have one more speaker on this, and that is Mr. Andrew Lynn, who is back with us in person.
Thank you, President Harden. Yeah, my name's Andrew. I'm with Columbus Socialist Alternative. And I also stand against ordinance 1346. You know, at a time when millions are protesting against police brutality and race violence, I don't think it's responsible to put a single step more into uniforms and accessories for the police. And as thousands of Columbus residents have already seen firsthand, the police already have far too many accessories at their disposal. And personally, I don't think there's any need for our police force to have military-grade gear, such as armored vehicles, riot gear, or grenade launchers. And at every single protest, it has been the police who have initiated and escalated the violence. Not only do I oppose these ordinances to increase funding for accessories and uniforms, but I also stand with others in this community in calling for an immediate 50% reduction in the budget for Columbus Police. If this council truly cares about community safety, then, and especially the safety and well-being of communities of color, it would not only defund CPD immediately by at least 50%, but it would also end tax abatements to wealthy corporations and tax the rich in order to fund a guaranteed green jobs program, permanently affordable social housing and public education. Because all of those things will go much further in increasing the safety of communities. The actions of Columbus Police have been inexcusable. And while some council members and city officials have paid lip service to the protests, anything short of these demands that people are bringing forward from our community, you know, will show that the actions of these city officials do not actually support their words or the community. So, again, I oppose ordinance 1346 and call for an immediate defunding of CPD by at least 50%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Are there any questions for Mr. Lynn? Councilmember Faber has a question for you. You should be able to hear it through there.
Actually, it's not for Mr. Lynn. It would be for one of the directors. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, but it's not for you, Mr. Lynn, so. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you. I'm not sure if I should direct this to Councilmember Brown, or Director Pettis, or Director Lombardi. But I'm wondering if we can elaborate on what accessories actually means in this context of the legislation.
Council President Harden, members of council, this is Director Pettis. The information that's been provided to me regarding this ordinance indicates that it is to appropriate the funds needed to completely outfit the new recruit class with uniforms and necessary equipment. The recruit class is starting in July, July 13th. And funds are being transferred from a line to cover the cost of uniforms, body-worn cameras, pistols, and the Applied Behavior Contract. This appropriation is requested every year that we have a recruit class.
So, accessories would specifically just include body-worn cameras and a weapon?
And the uniforms.
And the uniforms. Okay, thank you, Director.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Reemy.
Director, you mentioned the Applied Behavior Training or Contract. Could you expand on that a little bit as well?
Councilmember, I have the police chief here with me, if you don't mind. I'll refer to him and let him address that.
Councilmember Reemy and other members of council, I apologize. One of your questions was just about the Applied Behavioral Science portion of the contract here. Okay, so, yeah, we have licensed division psychologists that come in and provide actual scenario-based training, escalation training, crisis intervention training, methods and techniques to interact with people and try to get the best resolution using proper tactics, practices, and policies of the division of police. So, that program allows for division psychologists to come in and actually train. So, they're outside, civilian PhDs that come in and train our police recruits in how to interact in, say, domestic violence situations or other high-intensity crisis events, and they can provide that training with this contract.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Are there any further, Councilmember Dorance?
Thank you, Council President Harden. This is a question for Director Lombardi. Just a brief explanation. I know, Council President, at the beginning of the meeting, you talked about how the council plans to address the 2021 budget moving forward. And I know there are a lot of folks in the community right now that are requesting and demanding action on current budget items in front of us. I think that we as a body have, you know, clearly stated our interest in looking at the 2021 budget in a holistic way to address a lot of the concerns that are out there in the community. That said, obviously, a municipal budgeting process is very different compared to being able to immediately have a public safety budget in half. So, I wanted to know whether Director Lombardi could speak for a moment or two about sort of the municipal budgeting process in general, as council has talked about, how we're going to open this more up to the community in 2021 moving forward. But I think it'd be helpful for him to provide sort of a baseline understanding for how that typically works.
Sure. Thank you, President Harden, Councilmember Dorance, and other members of council. The normal process by which we do our budgets is typically in June or July, we send out what we call target budgets that's based on what we believe the available resources will be via the income tax. Those targets go to each department to both for personnel and supplies and services. Once those targets come back to our office, we then begin to have meetings with them to go through that budget, look at areas that can be reduced, where additional funding could be needed for other programs. The mayor is required by the charter to have a budget submitted to council by November 15th each year. And then at that point, council will have hearings, public hearings. And at that point, we can hear from the community of any ideas that they may have for that budget. I'm not sure if that totally answered your question, Councilmember. It's a much bigger process than that. I tried not to take up too much of their space tonight.
Appreciate that, Director, and that was a good, very good synopsis for us. I guess just one thing to make very clear, as a lot of folks in our community have asked us to make cuts and reallocate those dollars, the most appropriate place for to do so is that budgeting process, looking at 2021, in which we actually have the meaningful ability to say, this is how much money we have to spend as a city and here's where the priorities that we're looking at, how we go ahead and fund that. That's a fair statement, correct?
That is a fair statement, Councilmember Dorance.
Thank you, Director.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorance. Are there any other comments from my colleagues? I would just say to folks who are watching this portion of the agenda that, to Councilmember Dorance's part, point, we, this council, is committed to a process where we have conversation and we really have substantive dialogue about how we see and how we change the culture of Columbus Police. And that has a budgetary component to it. This legislation, specifically 1346, is dealing with one budgeted dollars that we budgeted last year to support a police class that is, for all intents and purposes, has already graduated. And so, I feel comfortable moving forward with this, understanding that we have to have a very tough conversation starting tomorrow around what demilitarization looks like and what we see as those tools that are unacceptable to be on our streets in Columbus. And we look forward to hearing from folks as we set those, not just value statements, but specifically, what do we see and what do we want our police officers to have as they engage with Columbus residents? So, I look forward to that conversation. It won't be easy. And we will get into the weeds of these pieces. But I think that I see separation in these two pieces, that conversation and 1346. Seeing no further speakers, if there are no further questions or comments, may I have a motion for approval of these items as needed as consent? Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Reemy, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam President. We will now proceed with the reading, with the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The committee, the first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee, that is chaired by President Pro Tem. President Pro Tem, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. I'm having trouble with my mute/unmute button, so, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Tonight, in Finance, we have Resolution 0096X-2020 to adopt the 2021 tax budget and to authorize and direct the city auditor to submit said budget to the county and to declare an emergency. This is a yearly resolution passed by city council. As in previous years, the second reading tonight will also act as a public hearing on the 2021 tax budget. Auditor Kilgore, if you would like to make any comments on the 2021 tax budget, please shout or do something audible so that I know that I see and hear you.
Finance Chair Brown, can you hear me okay?
I sure can, thank you.
Sure, absolutely. No, this is very customary, as you know. The tax budget includes the actual revenue and expenditures for the past two years, the two preceding years, and the actual expenditures for the first six months of this current year, along with our best estimates for the remaining six months, as well as the estimates for next year. Very customary. All actions have been handled to date. And we will be filing this upon your approval with the Franklin Fairfield and Delaware County Auditors. Thank you.
Thank you, Auditor Kilgore. We received no speaker slips. Are there any questions or comments, or especially for the auditor, from my colleagues? Please shout if so, again, so I know. Okay, well, seeing none, this concludes the hearing on the matter, and I move for adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Please call the row. Madam Chair, would you remove it from the table?
I apologize, yes. I first moved to remove it from the table.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Reemy, Tyson, President Harden.
Remove.
Now I move for adoption, please.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Reemy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, President Harden. Next, we have ordinance 1321-2020 to authorize the city auditor to modify contracts with OnActuate Consulting Incorporated, Knowledge Services, Navigator Management Partners, and/or such additional consultant vendors as may be necessary for upgrading Dynamics AX 2012 to Dynamics 365 Finance and Operations, and implementing Microsoft Point of Sale to provide funding for the upgrade of Dynamics 2012 and support and maintenance of Dynamics 365 Finance and Operations and Point of Sale system to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to appropriate and transfer funds from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Auditor Geo Bond Fund to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,150,000 from the Auditor Geo Bond Fund for a total expenditure of $1,150,000 and to declare an emergency. This ordinance makes updates to the auditor's office in response to the COVID-19 health crisis and the need to work remotely now and into the future. The city was in the process of migrating from Dynamics AX 2012 to 365 when the state of emergency was declared in March. IT resources were transitioned to meeting the needs of the emergency, such as support for remote access to city networks and more. This made it necessary to extend the timeline for the transition, but also highlighted additional work needed to ensure the city's financial operations can continue under states of emergency. This work includes implementing Microsoft Point of Sale to provide remote access for accounts receivable functions, virtual training for city platforms, and contracting with vendors to provide additional staffing support to the auditor's office as needed. The ordinance also authorizes the expenditure of up to $25,000 for a public-facing vendor portal. Funding is included in the event that additional adjustments in the scope of work are necessary to see the Dynamics 365 transition project to a successful conclusion. Are there any questions or comments from colleagues? Hearing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Reemy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, President Harden. Next, I have ordinance 1413-2020 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal term contract for the option to purchase surgical masks with Sterling Paper Company to authorize the expenditure of $1 from General Budget Reservation BRPO 001343 to waive the provisions of competitive bidding and declare an emergency. This contract for surgical masks will be used citywide by all departments and divisions. It will provide masks needed for employees, visitors, volunteers, to prevent the spread, excuse me, of COVID-19. The term is one year with the option to renew for one additional year. In order to provide these masks as quickly as possible, emergency action is being considered. action is being considered, and an emergency waiver is being utilized under the mayor's declaration of emergency. Are there any questions from colleagues? Hearing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And my final ordinance is 1454-2020 to authorize the city auditor to modify contracts with Ceridian, HCM, Dayforce, Navigator, FASME, and/or enter into such additional contracts with consultants or vendors as may be necessary for a project extension of an additional quarter due to delays in projects and changes in training plans related to the COVID-19 public health emergency, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of City Code, to provide funding for extension and expansion of the scope of work for the implementation of Dayforce payroll and personnel system, to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget, to authorize the city auditor to appropriate and transfer funds from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Auditor Geo Bond Fund, to authorize the expenditure of up to $468,500 from the Auditor Geo Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance implements necessary actions in response to COVID-19 disruptions and the ongoing project to modernize the city's payroll and personnel platform. Actions include extending the implementation timeline for an additional quarter, funding for project costs to cover additional labor hours, revised training plan and costs, and extensions of contracts with consultants related to the organization. The ordinance contains funding to enable compliance with COVID-19 public health precautions and meet any new reporting or regulatory requirements. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committee, is President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Mitch Brown. Councilmember floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, in public safety, I have Ordinance 1555-2020 to authorize Columbus City Council to enter into a grant agreement with Elements of Change in support of their driving park in the violence neighborhood development initiative, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $120,000 within the Public Safety Initiative Subfund and to declare an emergency. This project was developed by Elements of Change, a nonprofit organization designed to build healthier, safer neighborhoods and to provide an opportunity for disadvantaged youth and individuals with criminal backgrounds to make a positive contribution to their neighborhoods. The project involves the renovation of a four-unit apartment building obtained from the city land bank. Elements of Change will collaborate with local builder and trade unions, whose staff will work alongside the community personnel, mentoring them and providing direction on properly renovating the property in question. The program participants will be paid a stipend for participating, will be provided time management and work etiquette training, and will be presented with an in-depth information about the various trades, such as electrical work, plumbing, HVAC, et cetera. Upon completion of the project, the units will be made available to low-income residents, providing them with quality, safe housing. I would like to thank my colleagues, President Harden, Councilmembers Favor Remy and President Protem Brown, for the support of this very worthy project. At this time, Council President, would any of my colleagues like to make any comments?
Chair, just to say that this is a great program, and I appreciate your leadership. It's community-based and focused, and I just thank your leadership. Thank you for your leadership on this.
Thank you, Council President. At this time, I would like to amend this ordinance to reflect an increase in the grant amount from $100,000 to $120,000 as amended to the clerk.
Second. Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
And I would now move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. I would now like to return to the consent agenda to 1326, to authorize the mayor of the city of Columbus to accept a subgrante award from the Project Safe Neighborhoods 2018 Southern District Grant Violent Crime Apprehension Program from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services to authorize an appropriation of $124,998.90 from the unappropriate balance of the General Government Grant Fund to the Division of the Police to cover the costs associated with the Project Safe Neighborhoods 2018 Southern District Grant. And this violent crime apprehension program and to declare an emergency. Because I assume that we have some speaker slips.
I apologize. I was on mute. Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I can go through the speakers if that'd be helpful to you.
That would be helpful, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We have a speaker for, and we have speakers against. I will start with the speakers against. Do we have Caitlin Armstrong on via Webex on 1326?
I do not, sir.
Thank you. Do we have a Rosalind Matia via Webex?
I have more coming.
All right. Do we have a James Abbott via Webex?
I do not.
Thank you. Do we have a Sarah Weaver via Webex?
No, sir.
Thank you. Do we have an Angela Davis via Webex?
We do not.
Thank you. We had Andrew Lynn in person, but I no longer see Andrew in the chamber to speak against. It looks like we have one person in person to speak in favor of 14, ordinance 1326, is James Scanlon. We have James Scanlon in person, who is coming to the podium now. Mr. Scanlon, welcome to council.
Thanks, sir.
Just, if you would please give your name, if you represent any organization, and you have three minutes. Welcome to council.
Thank you. My name is James J. Scanlon. I'm a retired Columbus police officer. Between the years of 1978 and 2011, I primarily worked night shifts protecting the good citizens who live in our inner-city precincts. I love being there, and they love having me there. Like thousands of other CPD officers, I protected them against criminal gangs, robbers, and other predators. Poles and their families didn't like me being there. As cops, we were more concerned about what the good and decent people think about us and intimidate those good. Ginter and the members of city council have waged an ongoing assault on the fine women and men of the Columbus Division of Police. It is shameful how you and other city officials have demonized these officers and misinformed the public into believing that they are a group of rogue racist cops. All of you have relentlessly falsely accused the Columbus Division of Police and its officers of being complicit in a culture of systematic racism. Due to my 42 years' involvement with the Columbus Division of Police, I know that you're spreading falsehoods. Mayor Ginter stated, has stated recently that countless black men and women have died at the hands of police officers. That statement was both false and dangerously inflammatory. There have not been countless police-involved shooting deaths. Here are some facts. 600,000 to 800,000 Columbus police encounters with individuals each year. There were seven black suspects fatally shot by CPD officers in 2016, four in 2017, five in 2018, and one in 2019. In every single case, the suspects were armed and threatening. Facts matter. Each of these incidents have been thoroughly investigated and presented to the ultimate citizen review board, which is a grand jury. Mayor Ginter, you will be pleased to learn that in those four years, if you were not armed and threatening, the odds of a black suspect being fatally shot by Columbus police officer was exactly zero. You have every reason to be proud of your police officers you have been tasked to lead. But at last week's city council news conference, council members falsely vilified CPD officers for racist, systematic abuse and murder of African-American men and women. No facts or statistics were used to support their lame accusations. Instead, a council member, and I believe it was Council President Protem Brown, went so far as to condemn a specific CPD-involved shooting, citing a skewed system that resulted in the death of Henry Green. Many of you have spread a great deal of misinformation concerning the Henry Green case, leaving many citizens to believe that their officers gunned down Mr. Green for no reason. In reality, Mr. Green was shot by police officers after he fired six rounds of a 45-caliber ammunition at officers from a distance of 14 feet or less. Those rounds came within inches of striking officers, lodging in the corridor that one officer was behind and a headless, the other in front of second floor. Mr. Green was carrying a stolen .45 caliber handgun loaded with six rounds. I need you to be rolling facts today. It's too bad that the public never heard these facts from their city of Columbus elected officials. By the way, under the new reforms, how many rounds need to be fired at an officer before that officer may fire back? By not addressing specifics, Mayor Ginter and city council members have purposely misled the public into believing the Columbus Division of Police, their officers are routinely killing innocent black men. Their false narrative has greatly damaged the public's opinion of this amazing agency and created the most dangerous situation I've ever witnessed in this city. You should be ashamed of yourselves for misrepresenting the facts, misinforming the public, and driving a wedge between the citizens of Columbus and their fine police department.
Thank you for your comments. I mean, I can't speak for the mayor. I can only speak for this body in which I live.
I was speaking to you all, too. Both of you, all of you.
Yes, certainly. Thank you for your service and your time to the police department. What I would speak to is structural racism and the need for reform.
Charade of changing the whole, everything within the police department, rather than how we feel. Let's look at facts. I just get the facts, and they've been standing in this whole conversation. So I would like for some facts to be thrown into this thing. And the people who have the facts, probably not on the top floor of our police agency, but the rank and file will have them for you.
Would you submit your comments for record so that we can respond accordingly? Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? There are none. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm going to turn it back over to you. Mr. Chair, you are still muted.
Hang on. I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
I apologize. I would like to have the director or the chief of police speak to the ordinance with regards to the Project Safe Neighborhoods grant. I still have the chief here, councilman. That's okay.
Thank you, Chair Brown. In regard to this ordinance, last year, as I was doing budgeting for the new cruisers that would be assigned for this year, I directed that the license plate readers we have on one car precinct, as we rotate those cars out and replace them with new vehicles, we do not replace those license plate readers that are run through a criminal justice database. However, with this grant under the Violent Crime Apprehension Program, this is a program where in very specific targeted areas where a ShotSpotter is activated after a shooting, these couple license plate readers, one along Sullivan Avenue, one along Cleveland Avenue, one in Hilltop, one on the South End, these three specific areas are designed to activate when a ShotSpotter alert comes in. So it is, once officers arrive, a lot of times they find shell casings. Just the other day, we actually, last night or the night before, we responded and found a person shot. We have a car a lot of times leaving the area, but we never have any information on that person. And because it happened late at night, there's not a lot of information to go on or witnesses. This allows us to more specifically pinpoint who was in the area at that time. So officers are not randomly stopping vehicles in the area, but can actually isolate who the person was in the area, leaving the area at that time. The homicide's been up 40% this year over June, the same time last year, and 50% up over a three-year average. A lot of these shootings occur, are shootings into habitations, which are up 81% this year, and felonious assaults, which are up 244% this year. These, this specific technology allows us to work in unison with ShotSpotter to be able to identify potential vehicles that are in that area and allow officers to do follow-up investigation on those at later time. So it is basically designed for an investigative lead. So officers are not randomly looking at cars in the area, but are able to actually pinpoint the car that they are specifically looking for, known to be there at the same location at the same time. Do you have any questions for me, Chair Brown? You're muted, sir.
Approximately 80% of all crimes are committed with the use of an automobile. Is that correct?
I don't know that it's 80%, but that would be fairly accurate statistic, that they are in a vehicle either at the time they commit a crime or to access the area. And because of both these, these three areas are very close to freeway systems, they can get into the area and back out of the area before a street cruiser would arrive. So this allows us to backtrack what people, if they've already left the area.
Are there any comments from my colleagues?
Chair Brown, just a quick question. These are only activated...
I'm missing him.
No, no. It's the audio. It's not anything with you.
Oh, can you hear me now?
It's coming through. One second, Councilmember Brown.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. And this is only activated when ShotSpotter is activated. So in other words, it's not randomly licensed. It's all day long. It's only when ShotSpotter is activated. Correct, sir. It's activated when ShotSpotter... ...database, not a law enforcement database.
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear the answer to that question because there was an echo with the muting and unmuting.
Okay, the technology activates along with the ShotSpotter alert. It's not running tags or recording information all day long, only when there's a ShotSpotter alert. And it searches a commercial database, not a criminal justice database. So it's a different base of information than a criminal justice law enforcement database. It's just a commercial database.
So what does that mean, it searches a commercial database? It searches it for what?
So it'll record information, and we can go back and look at, max it up to information for known vehicles based on commercial, like our parking bureau uses a lot of license plate readers to look for violations of parking meters. And other businesses use input data that they collect, like repo cars, looking for repossessed cars. They're looking for that information. They're looking for that information and they have them in a database and search it. It's virtually provided information.
Thank you. Also, the, if a car at the location of the license plate reader, if their license is read, and again, I have, sometimes I have trouble hearing virtually, so please excuse me if this is a repetitive question from your initial comments, but the license plate is read and simply the act of reading the license plate when, you know, ShotSpotter went off, that is reasonable suspicion to then stop a car later?
Now, when they're red, that's something we would have to go back and look, detectives would go back and want to see later, which car was in that area at that time, so we know, we can narrow our search to only people we know. Let's say they said it was a red Jeep, might have been SUV, might have been some other type of vehicle. You know, we have sketchy information on vehicle, conflicting everything. But we get information when we go back and search the database or the commercial database that this was the vehicle actually leaving the area. Now, instead of stopping every red SUV we see in the area to try to see if they were responsible, a detective now can narrow it down to the exact car that was known to be
Does that answer your question, President Pro Tem?
It does, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilman Dorans, chief, don't leave yet. Councilman Dorans?
Thank you, Chair Brown. Thank you, chief. Building upon my colleague's question, so utilizing that information, so again, to your point, it's being cooperated with, with information that would be, exists in other parts of the investigation. So I think one of the concerns that I have certainly heard that this would be utilized to stop additional vehicles, so I think to council president Pro Tem Brown's point, you know, when you're talking about narrowing this down, you would not be narrowing it down from a perspective of, we're stopping every vehicle over a time period in which this incident occurred. From what I've heard from you is that a detective would then use that information, so, you know, if they have a red SUV, to your point, this is narrowing that down. You're not necessarily saying, hey, we had 25 cars going through Sullivan Avenue when this happened, so we're going to go talk to all 25 people. You're using it, from my understanding, as a way to narrow your search down based upon specifically what information the division has at that point. So it's not being used as a random tool to go then stop or interrogate dozens and dozens of folks who just happen to be driving through the neighborhood at that, during that incident, correct?
Correct. It's not expanding the number of cars that are, that are being actually looked at to be involved in these 81% increase in shots being fired into homes. It is narrowing it just to the ones we know to be in that area and right in the immediate vicinity at that time, shots were fired.
In which you have some other corroborating piece of evidence to demonstrate there's a reason to go talk to those people.
Correct. We may have other information that would, just a red vehicle in the neighborhood, but we don't, we can't just stop red vehicles. This will allow us to say, okay, this is one that we know to be in this area versus any other vehicle just having passed through the area over the next, you know, four, five hours while police are circulating the area. Now we know, you know, we can isolate.
Thank you, chief.
So, sorry, one more question on that. So if in, shots are fired and someone says, you know, I saw a black car, then you can stop any black car that, whose license plate was read by the LPR? Because that's the information that you have from, from folks who might have seen something on the scene? Is that, am I tracing the investigation timeline well enough?
Well, this information is not being immediately available. The license plate readers we have on cars now, check tags will immediately tell you that car stalled, say. That's not what this is. This is something detectives can go back to later and find out what cars were in this area at the time, what got captured, leaving, fleeing the scene, so to speak, and then can narrow down the search. So then, let's say, for instance, we may have SWAT go circulate the area and see if they can find that car at the location where we, where the license plate comes back to. And then they find the car, they may just set up one and watch it. And then they may see a person who, someone from inside the house said, I saw this person leaving out of a car, and they match this description. Now the SWAT officer sees a person come out of the house that matches the description, matches the clothing, get in that car and drive off. Now that may be reasonable suspicion to stop that car because you have more indicators that this car might be involved versus every other car that was, you may see driving around the area.
So what is your directive to officers in terms of how many other corroborating indicators, additional pieces of evidence, they have to require before they perform a traffic stop on someone whose license plate was read? Like, what's the requirement for additional pieces of evidence? How many pieces of evidence?
Well, to stop a vehicle, what it takes is either a moving violation or an equipment violation. Anything can justify a traffic stop. If you stop a car without a violation, you have to have reasonable suspicion that criminal activities. So you'd have to have some idea that, okay, we know this crime occurred at this location and we have witnesses that say this type of vehicle was seen leaving the area with this person or this description of a person driving. And now we have this car with this license plate here. Those are things that every officer is going to make that decision based on the totality of the circumstances. It's not advice or direction I give an officer that you must have these three-pronged tests in place. It's based on things that are occurring in real time, based on totality of the circumstance, and based on objectively reasonable facts. Can't just do it because I was bored, didn't, just wanted to snoop and see what this car was up to. You have to be able to articulate the facts that led you to stop this car unless there's a traffic violation involved.
Okay, thank you, that does answer my question. I apologize for my distracted just then, I do apologize. Thank you for your patience with me.
If there are no other questions, I'd like to amend the legislation to 30 days. Second?
Please call the row. Amended.
And I'd like to waive second reading. Second?
Please call the row. Waived. I don't think you're not. Can you speak?
And council president, I move for passage by voice.
Please call the row, but by voice.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Weber?
No.
Mr. Rimi? Tyson?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes. Ordinance is passed.
Council president, with your consent, could I move to veterans of senior affairs?
Please, sir.
And veteran senior affairs, I have ordinance 13, 2020, to authorize and direct the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging to accept grant funds from the Ohio Department of Aging in the amount of $3,317,619 and any additional funds for the Coronavirus Aid Response and Economic Security CARES Act to provide the appropriation of $3,317,619 and any additional funds from the unappropriated balance of the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund to authorize the city auditor to transfer appropriation between object classes and grant numbers for the CARES grant funding, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter supplemental contracts in the amount of $2,767,922 with the providers authorized by ordinance 25112, 2019, and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
My voice.
Ms. Brown?
My voice.
Thank you.
My voice.
Abstain.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Rimi?
Got it.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes. Ordinance passed.
President Harden, that's all I had this evening, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to go ahead and call, ask for motion to recess as we, so we can go into zoning at 6:30. There motion to recess?
So moved.
Second. Please call, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Weber, Rimi, Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting number 26 will now come to an end, but please call the row.
Thank you. Before beginning zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side. And we provide, excuse me, an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, anyone who wishes to speak for or against any council variance, including staff, plea, and cling staff must be sworn in prior to giving testimony. We do so prior to the beginning of the reading of each variance on the agenda. The first ordinance is, it's ordinance 1275, it's to rezone 2435 Billingsley Road, being 3.04 acres located on the south side of Billingsley Road, 3,080 feet east of Sawmill Road from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. Applicant is Buyer's Realty LLC. The proposed use is a commercial building expansion. The city department's recommendation is approval and the far northwest Coalition's recommendation is approval four to zero. I do have, I'm gonna ask for a staff presentation.
This site is developed with vacant commercial building in the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. Ordinance 1451-2012 was approved for this site and included automobile sales with a commitment to a site plan. The proposed CPD Commercial Plan Development District will update the existing site plan and development text to permit a building expansion for a used automobile sales facility with a reduction parking setback from 200 feet to 125 feet. The site is located within boundaries of the northwest plan, commands community commercial land uses for this location. In consideration of the nearby residential development, the CPD text contains provisions for increased landscaping along Billingsley Road and lighting controls while prohibiting billboards and off-premise graphics. Staff believes the proposal contains appropriate development standards in consideration of the adjacent residential properties and is consistent with the automobile sales development located to the west. Thank you. And city department's recommendation is for approval and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from staff? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask for a presentation from the applicant Jeff Brown.
Jeff, you're still on mute. Jeff is still on mute. There we go. Did we lose?
Can you hear me?
There we go.
All right, sorry about that. Members of council, this development is the result of a need to change the site plan. The property was owned a couple of years ago for a used, a new car dealership and they committed to a site plan. My client would like to expand the building there and so we needed to update the site plan. And in addition to that, we were adjusting the parking setback as we've done with the other two properties that are immediately to the west. We went through this with the neighborhood area group. The development standards are consistent with the other dealerships that they have supported and staff is in favor of this. The area, neighborhood group is in favor of this and the development commission recommended approval of the request. So I'm happy to answer any questions that members might have.
Thank you, Jeff. I have one speaker for, on this zoning, it's Aaron Newman.
Yes, good evening, Chair Tyson, President Harden and members of council. I'm Aaron Newman, resident of 8844 Atherton Road, Columbus, Ohio, and president of the Far Northwest Coalition of Columbus, here to provide some additional information on the Coalition's recommendation for application, Z2012. This application, as you, many of you know, follows a string of similar building and parking expansion requests, properties to the west along Billingsley Road. The first of which predates, I think, a majority of the current members' time on council and indeed predates my own time with the Coalition. So these requests have been coming in for many years. The board first heard the current application at our February meeting when residents of the far northwest and board members expressed concerns, requested that the setback match the neighboring properties to the west with respect to mounding trees, natural screening and other landscaping features, recommending that new and existing lighting be unobtrusive to neighboring properties, requesting that a representation of the proposed building expansion, which was not included in the application, be provided. And additional requests, our March meeting was canceled due to the public health emergency, but we were back up and running on Zoom for April. Then the applicant presented a revised plan that would include adding mounding in front of the parking area, dimming lighting after business hours, increasing the building setback to limit future expansions and limiting delivery times on the weekend. With these revisions, the application, as Mr. Brown noted, was largely brought to the same standards as the previous expansion requests along Billingsley, all of which were approved. And with these revisions, the board voted to recommend approval. However, I'll note, the final vote was actually four to one recommending approval. So we did have a, one of our few divided votes for this application and our recommendation did, did come acknowledging and sharing the sincere concerns that our neighbors had about the impact that these expansions have on quality of life and enjoyment of homes on, in the far northwest. So we also recommend that the applicant, regardless of today's council vote, works closely with the residents across and along Billingsley Road and commit to being good neighbors here in the far northwest. And, yeah, that's it. I'll, I'll thank you again and be happy to answer any questions.
Jeff, you're still on mute, I'm so sorry.
My client will be a good neighbor. I will provide Aaron with the contact person. So if there's any questions as we move forward, they will have a person that they can talk to and get answers for.
We appreciate that.
Thank you, Jeff, and certainly, Mr. Newman, I have worked on a number of the, these zoning deals on, on Billingsley and certainly have appreciated the opportunity to, to work with the far northwest Coalition on these standards that certainly that Jeff is presenting today. So, excuse me, so I appreciate you coming down and, and sharing your comments and look forward to our continued partnership. If there are no more further questions, I move to waive second reading.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Weber, Rimi, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Weber, Rimi, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 13, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, all right. The next ordinance is 1369-2020 to rezone 40 North Parkwood, being .76 acres located on the east side of Parkwood, 200 feet south of East Long Street from the R3 Residential District to the AR2 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is 48 Parkwood LTD. And the proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval. The Near East Area Commission's recommendation is approval eight to two. I'm going to ask for a staff presentation.
The site consists of five parcels developed with three vacant residential buildings in the R3 Residential District. The applicant proposes the AR2 Apartment Residential District in order to redevelop the southern portion of the site with a new apartment building while retaining and expanding northern building for apartments. Concurrent council variance, ordinance 1370-2020, CV19108, has been submitted to vary the building height, minimum numbers of parking spaces required, building lines and perimeter yards. It is reflective of recent urban infill development. The site is located within the boundaries of the Near East Area Plan, which does not contain the land use recommendation for this location. The plan does support the development of new housing that contribute to a walkable and diverse neighborhood and also stresses the importance of preserving and renovating the existing housing stock. The requested AR2 Apartment Residential District will allow a multi-unit residential development that is compatible with the established development pattern of the area. City department's recommendation is for approval and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, I am going to ask for a presentation from the applicant and that's also the speaker slip that we received. So Otto Beatty?
Good evening, Councilwoman Tyson and other members of council. I believe our council, Dave Perry, is here to make the presentation.
Thank you. Dave?
Sure. Good evening, all members of council, Dave Perry. The project is as stated by city staff, there is the north building, 48 Parkwood, historically significant building and in December of 2019 was awarded State of Ohio Historic Preservation Tax Credits. The, the middle building and south building are in a very, very dilapidated condition because of weather damage, roofs leaking and so on. One was used as a nursing home years ago and the inside was literally completely gutted for the nursing home use. The, so the project is to renovate the north building, 48 Parkwood, as a historic building and then build a new 27-unit building on the balance of the property and develop a parking lot behind. The, the site is immediately off of the East Broad Street ARO corridor and the butts, older apartment buildings to the south and East Broad Street has also seen some good activity in development of, of new multifamily and condominium buildings that are close by the site. As, as staff indicated, the Near East Area Plan doesn't make a specific land use recommendation, but talks about compatibility and preservation of housing stock, which this proposal certainly addresses both. We did a parking study at the request of the traffic staff and the parking variance is supported by the city and the project is completely supported by the Near East Area Commission. Thank you.
Ms. Tyson?
I'm sorry.
You're, you're, you didn't.
You didn't.
There we go.
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Okay. We have one, we have one. It is Otto Beatty. The floor is yours.
I had no additional comments beyond the presentation by Mr. Perry. I was here for purposes of answering additional questions or for rebuttal to any opposition.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you very much. Well, seeing there are no questions, I would now.
Captain Tyson, I do have one question.
Okay.
Mr. Beatty, can you speak to the affordability of the proposed units?
Yes, under our current projections and plan, can you hear me? Okay, under, under our current projections and plans, we envision that the all 36 units would be considered workforce affordable at the range of 60 to 70% AMI. 100% of the units, these are primarily one-bedroom units with maybe a couple of studios.
That's great news, Mr. Beatty. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for my council colleagues? Seeing none, I move to waive second reading.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Weber, Rimi, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you. And again, I'm excited about the affordability of these units and so now I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Weber, Rimi, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Anyone this, anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against the council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. Thank you. So this is the variance to the, the ordinance that we just passed and it's ordinance 1370-2020 is to grant a variance from the provisions of sections 3309.14, height districts 3312.49, minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 3333.18, building lines, 3333.255 perimeter yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 40 North Parkwood to permit a multi-unit residential development with reduced development standards in the AR2 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is 48 Parkwood LTD, Care of Dave Perry. Proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval and the Near East Area Commission's recommendation is approval. If there are no comments or questions for my colleagues, I move to waive second reading.
Second.
Thank you.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Weber, Rimi, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Weber, Rimi, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. The variance is 1380-2020 to grant a variance from the provisions of sections 3332.02, R Rule District, 3353.03, permitted uses 3312.21A landscaping and screening and 3312.49B, minimum numbers of parking spaces required of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 2200 West Broad Street to permit a 208-bed behavioral health hospital with reduced development standards in the R Rule District and the LC2 Limited Commercial District. The applicant is the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. The proposed use is behavioral healthcare hospital. The city department's recommendation is approval and the Hilltop Air Commission's recommendation is approval 13 to zero. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Weber, Rimi, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Weber, Rimi, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. 1387-2020 is to amend ordinance 2563-2012, passed December the 10th of 2012, for property located at 6127 Harlem Road by repealing section three and replacing it with a new section three, thereby modifying the limitation text as it pertains to the maximum number of beds, building area and impervious surface area. It's again an ordinance amendment, the proposed amendment is to allow for extra beds, area and surface area for a senior housing facility. The department, the city department's recommendation is approval and the Rocky Fork Black Lick Accord Implementation Panel's recommendation is also approval. If there are no questions or comments, I move to amend to emergency. Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Weber, Rimi, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, and now I move for passage as amended.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Weber, Rimi, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. Ordinance number 1409-2020 to grant a variance from the provisions of sections 3332.033, R2 Residential District, 3312.49C, minimum numbers of parking spaces required of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 5160 South Bend Drive to permit a type of A home daycare with reduced number of parking spaces in the LR2 Limited Residential District. The applicant is Timothy Etienne. The proposed use is a type A home daycare with a single unit dwelling. The city department's recommendation is approval. The Greater Southeast Air Commission's recommendation is approval seven to zero. I do have written testimony that is in support of this legislation from Timothy Luzio and Stephen Kinsey. If there are no comments on my colleagues, I move to waive second reading.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Weber, Rimi, Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Weber, Rimi, Tyson, President Brown, Brown, Dorans favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1410 2020 to rezone 4899 Cleveland Avenue being point 26 acres located on the southwest corner of Cleveland Avenue, excuse me, and Kilburn Avenue from the LC3 Limited Commercial District to the CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Allied Property Holdings LLC. The proposed use is a neighborhood scale commercial development. The city department's recommendation is approval and the Northland Community Council's recommendation is approval 13 zero to one. If there are no comments or questions from my colleagues, I move to waive second reading.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Second. He's called the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2463 dash 2019 to rezone 2299 Performance Way being 13.82 acres located on the south side of Performance Way, 2,0850 feet west of Allen Creek Drive from the RRR Resident, Restricted Rural Residential District to the M1 Manufacturing District, LM2 Limited Manufacturing District to the M2 Manufacturing District. The applicant is Brian Gibson. The proposed use is industrial uses. The city department's recommendation is approval and the Far South Area, Area Commission's recommendation was disapproval five to five. And I spent, um, and my, and my, um, team spent significant amount of time working with, um, the Far South Air Commission and, um, and I, and we don't have any speaker slips on this. We did, um, make some, we did, um, have some, make some adjustments, but I want to say that we had some compromises in this and, um, I think that it worked out well for, um, the applicant and the, um, commission. So I know there aren't any speakers tonight and so I move to waive second reading.
Second. He's called the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
He's called the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. Ordinance 2464 dash 2019 to grant a variance from provisions of sections 3311 point 28A, requirements 3312 point 43, required surface for parking and 3367 point 29B, storage of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 2299 Performance Way to permit reduced development standards for heavy equipment sales and storage, uh, development in the M2 manufacturing dis- district. The applicant is Brian Gibson. Proposed use is heavy equipment sales and storage. The city department's recommendation is approval and the Far South Air Commission's recommendation is disapproval. And again, this is a variance for the legislation that we just passed. Um, there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move to waive second reading.
Second. He's called the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And that concludes the my zoning, the zoning agenda this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I have a motion to, uh, adjourn? Sorry. So moved.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. If it's all right, council members, can we phone rolling? All right. May I have a motion to reconvene meeting number 25?
So moved. Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
We are back in meeting number 25. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Dorans. House member, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. In the Public Utilities Committee tonight, I have ordinance number 0945 dash 2020 to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to appropriate and accept the remaining fee simple and lesser real estate necessary to limit, uh, to timely complete the Linden Neighborhood Storm Improvement Phase Two Project and declare an emergency. The Department of Public Utilities is performing phase two of the Linden Neighborhood Storm, Storm System Improvement Project. The city must acquire certain real estate located in the vicinity of Merck Linden for DPU to timely complete this public project. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next I have ordinance number 1301 dash 2020 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to negotiate and enter into a contract for purchase power to waive provisions of the Columbus City Code relating to an award of contracts to the request for proposal process to authorize the expenditure of $1 from the electricity operating fund and to declare an emergency. The legislation authorized the Director of Public Utilities to negotiate with multiple potential providers of purchase power to enter into a contract for purchase power and waives provisions of the Columbus City Code relating to the award of contracts to the RFP process. Negotiating contract terms and power pricing with more than one provider should allow the city to secure the best contract available. It's in our, our customers' best interest to obtain stable prices in advance. Wholesale electric prices are currently driven in large measure by the price for national gas. Currently, low natural gas prices and record levels of natural gas in storage have pushed the market down over recent months, resulting in favorable market conditions, uh, procuring additional electric generation supply. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
He's called the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next we have ordinance number 1306 dash 2020 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Shelley and Sons, Inc. for the Scioto Peninsula Sanitary Sewer and Water Improvement Project in the amount of up to $6,640,826.91. To authorize the appropriation transfer of $5,675,478.33 in Sanitary Reserve Fund to the Ohio Water Development Loan Fund to authorize the appropriation of expenditure of $5,675,478.33 in the Ohio Water Development Loan Fund to authorize expenditure of up to $706,283.20 within the Sanitary General Obligation Voted Bond Fund to authorize a transfer and expenditure of $1,028,552.26 within the Water General Obligation Bond Fund to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget and to declare an emergency. Uh, the project will renew, uh, renew aging sewer infrastructure, help reduce overflows in water and basements occurrences and facilitate redevelopment of one of the oldest sections of the city of Columbus. Sewer treatment costs will also be reduced because runoff will be directed away from the treatment plant. The goal of the water line work is replace or rehabilitate the existing water lines that have high break frequency. Replacement of these water lines will improve water service, decrease burdens in water maintenance operations and reduce water loss. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
He's called the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. May I move on to the Neighborhoods Committee?
Please.
Thank you. Tonight we have ordinance number 1281 dash 2020 to authorize the Director of the Department of Neighborhoods to enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio State University in support of the Boys and Young Men of Color Collective to closely examine the etypleological data associated with the ethnic disparities related to COVID-19. To authorize a transfer and appropriation between departments, to authorize expenditure within, within the CARES Act Fund and to declare emergency. Council President, at your request and with your permission, I request to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Is there another second? Second? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, that is all I have this evening to my committees.
Thank you, sir. Next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Favor. House member, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in public service and transportation, we have ordinance number 1038 dash 2020 to authorize the Director of Public Service to pay utility relocation costs to various utilities for the King Lincoln District, Long Garfield, Monroe and Tom, Tomage Project to authorize expenditure of up to $1 million for utility relocations for this project from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes payment for utility relocation work as needed by American Electric Power, AT&amp;T, Spectrum, Windstream and other utilities for the King Lincoln District. This will help support the department's streetscape improvements for East Long Street and it is necessary to move the utilities to complete the project. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next we have ordinance number 1339 dash 2020 to authorize the Director of Public Service to pay utility relocation costs to various utilities for the roadway improvements, Creative Campus Phase Two Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,700,000 for utility relocations for this project from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes payment for utility relocation work for the roadway improvements, Creative Campus Phase Two Project by American Electric Power, Columbia Gas of America of Ohio, AT&amp;T, Spectrum, Windstream and other utilities. Project work includes transforming Cleveland Avenue from Mount Vernon Avenue to Long Street from four lanes to three lanes, including a center turn lane. The project will also construct wider sidewalks and safer crosswalks, underground existing overhead utilities, plant new streetlights and establish on-street parking to complement creative campus neighborhood improvement efforts. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
He's called the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And last we have ordinance number 1446 dash 2020 to appropriate funds within the Street and Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund to waive the formal bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code to authorize the city's chief innovation officer to execute a professional service contract with Bike Mark relative to the Smart Columbus Common Payment System Project to authorize the expenditure of up to $200,000 from the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund and up to $64,800 from the Smart City Grant Fund to pay for the contract and to declare an emergency. Director Stevens, um, I'm going to turn it over to you just to talk a little bit more about this project.
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Favor, members of council. Uh, Bike Mark was part of the original team that won the competitive bid on the common payment system where the, uh, general, the prime contractor with Siemens. Uh, what we've, as we've advanced this project, we realized we need a merchant of record services. Uh, that is not something that Siemens is, uh, available to do. So what we're doing is we're carving out the dollars that were part of the original Siemens contract and doing a direct contract with Bike Mark to do this work. So it's no new additional dollars and Bike Mark was part of a competitive process, uh, which was awarded to, uh, the team that was, won the, uh, additional competitive. Have you answered any questions?
Thank you, Director Stevens. Are there any questions, uh, for Dr. Stevens? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, uh, the next committee to come before council is the Environment Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I have one item. Columbus. Those are weird. Better? Okay. Uh, tonight I have ordinance number 567 2020. I'm going to, I'm going to. Enter into a grant. Authorization of the city's street, be authorized in appropriation and. City Council to enter into a grant agreement with Green Columbus to facilitate ongoing operations of programs that are environmental. The revitalization. Green Columbus will utilize this brand to continue up following programs and activities, growing and distributing trees in Linden and Hilltop. Organization's tree nurseries with. Pushing a citywide world cleanup on September 19th, 2020. Increasing small and safe volunteer activities in alignment with public health guidelines for Earth Day Columbus 2021, including planting pollinator gardens, tens of thousands of new tree seedlings. So. Cleanup and many. Restoration activities. The current Columbus Urban Forest Master Plan will call for more trees as well as outreach and expanding educational training in hard-to-reach neighborhoods. Columbus is the fastest-growing heat island in the nation and is in the top ten overall. As a result, Green Columbus is increasing efforts to plant trees in central Ohio. Additional benefits include stormwater runoff and increased biodiversity. Emergency action is requested in order to provide Green Columbus with the resources necessary to sustain ongoing programming and event planning. This evening we have Klaus Eckert, Executive Director of Green Columbus to share a few words. Klaus, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, thank you. Dear honorable members of the Columbus City Council, my name is Klaus Eckert and I represent Green Columbus in my role as the Executive Director. We believe that an equitable tree canopy combined with clean streams, streets and parks lead to strong neighborhoods. Like many nonprofits, Green Columbus has taken a big hit over the last three months. We had a cancer Earth Day Columbus celebration and most of the service sites this year. Despite the pandemic, for Earth Day Columbus this year, as part of a larger network, we have been able to distribute and plant 31,000 tree seedlings, 5,000 pollinator plants and $10,000 worth of mulch and topsoil to community gardens, all while following strict health guidelines here in central Ohio. To continue the work we're doing, we kindly request funding support from the council over the three main activities over the next 12 months. This includes support for growing and distributing trees in Linden and Hilltop and urban tree nurseries on city land bank parcels, a week-long cleanup effort around World's Cleanup Day in mid-September in central Ohio and Earth Day Columbus 2021. We want to increase the numbers of small and safe volunteer activities with a focus on underserved communities and neighborhoods like Linden, the South Side, Franklin and Hilltop. Activities will be planting pollinator and trees, setting up urban farms, cleanups in parks, streets, off-ramps, watersheds, et cetera. These efforts will be in collaboration with many of our city's friends and partners such as Green Columb-, uh, Keep Columbus Beautiful, Columbus Greenspot, council members, the recreation and parks departments, including support for the current Columbus Urban Forest Master Plan and many, many more. Green Columbus strongly supports the council's ongoing work towards a more equitable and just city for everyone. This current pandemic will pass, but climate change will not and will hurt the most vulnerable in this city and in this, uh, central Ohio region. We believe that a healthy, green environment plays an integral role in social justice and strong resilient neighborhoods. We're grateful for any of the council's support.
Thank you so much, Klaus. We appreciate the partnership. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Quick, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you very much. With your permission, I'll move on to administration.
Please.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Um, tonight I have ordinance number 1456 2020 to authorize Columbus City Council to apply for and accept a grant from Welcoming America, Inc., to authorize an appropriation from the unappropriated balance of the private grant fund, to authorize an appropriation within the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund and to declare an emergency. Columbus City Council has been awarded a $10,000 grant from Welcoming America, Inc. in support of the city's engagement efforts to improve transparency and communication for non-English speaking residents. The grant award is available, made available through September 30th, 2020, and the funds granted will be used to develop a series of culturally specific public service announcement videos targeting new Americans, immigrants and refugees in Central America, central Ohio. and refugees in central Ohio. The videos will balance timely COVID-19-related content with general information regarding access to essential services and resources. This evening, we have Tariq Terry with Visual Communications to share a few words on this project. Tariq was very instrumental in assisting the city with applying for the Welcoming America grant and will also produce the PSAs. Tariq, the floor is yours.
President and council members, I sincerely appreciate the platform you've given me this afternoon, this evening. As you all know, the new American population here in central Ohio is immense, and there's a lot of misinformation and a lot of things that are not being clear with the community. With your help, Councilmember Remy and all, this will highlight a lot of the need that we have in the community, and will serve a great public service announcement to support the community, to understand the pandemic, the new information that is coming out from Columbus Public Health and the federal level as well, for us to prevent this community from bottoming. At the moment, as you all know, most of the new Americans are refugees, and with that, there's a lot of people culturally from areas where things are disseminated orally. This is why it's important that videos and that kind of visual communication is extremely important for people to understand how to prevent the spread of COVID-19. So with that, I appreciate everyone, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Tariq. We're really looking forward to this project. I'd like to thank my staff for their involvement in writing the grant, Lucy Frank, Sandra Lopez with the community engagement team here on council, Karina Johnson, and the City Affairs Office. All of them were instrumental in making sure that we got the grant in, the grant application in, and ultimately were awarded the grant. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you very much. That's all I have in administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The final committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. I have ordinance number 1201-2020. It is to authorize the Board of Health to accept a grant from the Department of Health for the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Program in the amount of $748,115 to authorize the appropriation of $748,115 to the Health Department and the Health Department's Grants Fund. And I'm going to ask Dr. Mashika Roberts, our Health Commissioner, to add comments regarding this ordinance.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Tyson. Yes, this is a grant that we've had for some time, and as a result of this grant, it allowed us to be very well-prepared for COVID-19 when it arrived. It's an emergency preparedness grant that funds some of my staff to make sure we keep our communications open with our first responders, that we have plans in place for things like a pandemic, which we are using right now in real life. So a very well-needed grant, and it's been one that we've had for several years now, and it's really put us in the position where we are today that we can respond appropriately.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. I certainly have been on, when we've had emergency preparedness real activities in our community, I have been able to see the work not only at Columbus Public Health, but our other partners in prepared for an emergency. So I'm excited to have these funds and appreciate, and very appreciative of your team being prepared for the epidemic that we're in right now. So if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Fast.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1253-2020. It is to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a Get Vaccinated Ohio grant from the Ohio Department of Health to authorize the appropriation of $429,990 in grant money from the unappropriate balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. Again, I'm going to ask Dr. Roberts, our Health Commissioner, to make comments on this ordinance. Dr. Roberts, the floor is yours.
Absolutely. Thanks again, Councilmember Tyson. Yeah, so this is a grant that we get from Ohio Department of Health to help with our vaccine clinic, our immunization clinic. And if you haven't heard the data, that during the pandemic, immunizations dropped significantly among our pediatric populations. And so our clinic unfortunately was closed for several weeks because we had to use that staff in a different way to respond to the pandemic. We reopened the clinic two weeks ago, and we are now by appointment only out of extreme safety for not only our patients but our staff. And we've had a full volume of patients coming in to get those services. So it's a small grant we get from the state, but we appreciate any support we can to offset our expenses. Thank you. You're on mute, Councilmember.
You're on mute.
You're unmuted, Councilmember.
You're now open for vaccinations. Is that for ages six and below? Or all age?
Right now, yes, that is correct. Right now, we are focusing on our pediatric, our younger children, but we're hoping to expand that soon so that we can get prepared for back to school. But we're prioritizing six and below right now.
Thank you. If there are no other questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Fast.
Thank you. The final ordinance in my committee this evening is 1296-2020 is to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept additional funding from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $101,183 to authorize the appropriation of $101,183 to the Health Department and the Health Department Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. The My Baby and Me program aims to serve a minimum of 700 clients, of which 300 are pregnant women, 300 are infants and children up to the age of 18 months, preconception women, and interception women combined, and 100 fathers and male partners affiliated with the Healthy Start, women and infant and childrens. These families are referred by the community partners or medical providers recruited by My Baby and Me staff through the engagement with other programs at Columbus Public Health or community events, or clients can self-refer. The My Baby and Me program employs the skills of registered nurses, social workers, and community outreach workers that provide in-home, family-centered services, including support, education, referrals to other needed services, and linkage with medical coverage, WIC, or other benefits, among others. Any pregnant or parenting woman or interested parties can contact 614-724-BABY, 614-724-2229, for more information or to make a referral to My Baby and Me program. And with that, that is, that's all the legislation I have. Councilmember Harden, I would also just ask that this weekend, we certainly have a holiday coming up, and for individuals who are out and about, again, please mask up. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We got a vote on it, though.
Oh, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Fast.
That's all I have now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And like the chair was saying, have a safe and happy Fourth of July to everyone. Please wear your mask and enjoy your time with your family, but please be socially distant. And thank you so much. There are no further comments. Our business to come for council. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Council is adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.